City Council Meeting, beginning at 6:30. Please join me in a pledge. Okay, do we have any proposed amendments to the published agenda? I have one thing that I'd like to add as item seven E. Seven E, and that would be a discussion about the Fort Orchard Community Center and a potential presentation to the public facility, Kitsap Public Facility District on December 3rd. That is the...
E.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to add an agenda item, seven E, and that is the Fort Orchard Community Center presentation by the city on December 3rd, potentially, I understand, a potential presentation at Kitsap Public Facilities. At their district board meeting. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with...
So, that was a motion to add, I didn't hear it seconded.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Pro-Tim, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Seconded.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, agenda's approved. Okay, so we're on to citizen comments. This is our first public comment period. The public comment period is limited to items that are on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, please raise your hand to be acknowledged, step to the microphone, and then state your name for the record. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Am I moved to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Okay, we have a presentation tonight. The Fathoms of Fun Civil War Reenactor's Group, and Sharon King is leading this off.
Well, my speech starts out, Mr. Mayor, so I guess it's Mayor Pro-Tim.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council members and audience, I am Sharon King, Chair of Fathoms of Fun Festival, and with me tonight is Roy Talbot. Roy? He is Chair of the Fourth U.S. Company C, and Deb Quinn, who is a member of U.S. Company C, and as an FYI, Company C out of Fort Stillicom was Lieutenant Slaughter's company, of which you know, we were Slaughter County before we were Kitsap County. I would like to share with you how I came about to know these two individuals. The next day after our parade this past summer, I received an email from Deb asking if her Civil War group could be in our parade next year. I responded with not only a big yes, but let's take it one step further, I ask her. Would you do some demonstrations during our summer festival and the grand parade weekend? That began our email conversations, a trip to Chehalis in August to watch the Civil War reenactor battle of actors from five states plus a Canadian group. I then met with Deb and Roy to show them our waterfront area and to begin planning as to how they could set up some of their displays for our parade weekend. The purpose of the meeting here tonight is to get you excited about this group and to seek your permission through the formal event application process that will follow for this group to, one, to set up approximately three officer tents and six soldier tents on the grassy area by the Port of Bermerton Marina office. We have already met with Kathy Garcia, and I believe his title is the Facilities Maintenance Manager regarding this, and they are totally on board with them coming, and they have also offered their restroom and shower facilities to this group. Number two, to set up approximately ten tents and their hospital unit, which holds 24 cots, in the grassy area at the city's boat launch, where the public would be able to view this area as well as the living quarters of the officers at the marina area. Security would be provided by Company C. I thought that General Lee here would be in costume tonight, but he's not, and I thought Deb would be in period dress, but she's not, so I'd like to call them up here at this time, because they're going to do some slide work. Their plan is to utilize the Seroptimist overlook as well as other display areas for a living history of the Civil War, to include displays of historical weapons, historical toys, and much more throughout the marina area for the summer festival weekend. I would also like to file an application with the Department of Transportation for not only the parade on Saturday, but also for a two-hour window on Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. for the Fourth Infantry Company C to do an actual battle skirmish on Bay Street, the two-block section east of the Sydney intersection. In addition, Company C has also offered to put on a grand ball on Saturday evening after the parade at the gazebo in full period dress from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. And so now, we would like to show you some slides that I took when I went down to Chehalis, where General Lee and Deb will fill you in. Do you have a name to go with your Company C, or you just miss Deb?
Oh, yeah, I don't have a period name, no.
Okay. You just push the down arrow when you're ready to click to the next one. Does she aim it at that? Just, okay, you just go.
So, obviously, General Lee is on the right and General Grant is on the left. They're both part of our Fourth U.S. Company C. They will both be at the event, she will be getting permission to Company. This is an officer's wall tent and typically what is set up at an event. We probably wouldn't have this big of a display, given the grassy area, and just so you know, when we do come into an area, we police our own gear. If we, when we have a skirmish, we pick up everything, you don't even know that we were there. We wouldn't be having a campfire, we would just, you know, be setting up our camp, and we use spikes and everything, and everything goes back as if you didn't even know that we were ever in the area, so don't worry about anything being damaged, it's not that kind of an event. This is what a mess hall would look like, so to be, we all have, we have period clothing and period gear, so it's just a big fly. We would be eating at, at the restaurants, but we still would have a display, just to show people what an actual historical camp would look like. This is what the soldiers would be staying in on the, this is the Company Street. This is a hospital steward display. We have a big Company Field Hospital, like they would have had in Gettysburg, so the fly is so large, it could fit 24 cots underneath it. We don't put that many in it, but we have a lot of displays. We have a lot of our own historical gear, everything that's on our own personal property, so we have, you know, thousands of dollars of our own things that we bring. We wear period correct outfits, so we put on quite a show. This is a landship, so we have our Navy, we have infantry, we have cavalry. We wouldn't bring the cavalry, because such a small event, we wouldn't, we wouldn't bring them to this kind of an event. We would bring a small cannon, but we wouldn't shoot it off, it's just for display only. If we were at a bigger event in a large area, we would have a full-on battle. We're talking about having a little skirmish, which basically would mean we'd have Confederates coming into one end of the town, we come into the other end of the town, we just shoot black powder, we don't use anything more than that, we shoot up in the air, we don't do anything to harm anybody, we would do like a little firing demonstration, that's for safety. This is some Navy weaponry, this is the historical kind of things that we have in our own personal possession. It's a nice way for, you know, families to learn, especially like the people that like to come to these events are kids that have been homeschooled, you know, and they can actually go through and look at weapons, look at what a Navy rigging would look like, you know, look at what a hospital tent would look like. We have all of that to display, so we have a lot of stuff that we can bring and show everybody. This is some ladies that would come out after the battle, and the soldiers are laying on the ground, and they're either wounded or dead, and this is how they would grieve for the wounded soldiers. This is another unit getting ready to go into battle. Some Union soldiers. And musicians, musicians were very important during the Civil War. These are vivandiers, they're like mascots, some units had them, some didn't. They were women, sort of what you think of as a nurse today, they would carry water to their soldiers, bandage them. There weren't really nurses during the Civil War, we didn't have any nursing schools, but a lot of women would come and do what they could. It's like every, in some little towns, there was always a woman who knew how to birth a baby, knew how to do some kind of care, so the vivandiers fulfilled that service in the Civil War. This is a firing demonstration, which is what we do, you know, before, just to make sure all of the weaponry was in good condition, otherwise, you know, it's for safety. That's actually me on the left. So, that's just a little sample of, we didn't want to come in period clothes, we wanted to kind of keep it a little bit of a mystery, so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions for you.
Can I pass around?
Oh, yeah.
Can I pass around some binoculars?
Those are actual...
These are period binoculars. I found them at Seaside, Oregon, at the acting show, and I wasn't looking for them, I just came across my bottom. It said on the bottom here, "Two Grandfather Johnson," and no kid would call his grandfather General, but it is for a General of the Union Civil War, General Johnson. And if you look through these, you'll have to look far away, I've already kind of adjusted them, looking, passing them around, but I did some research and found out that there was actually two General Johnsons, the Union and his son in the Confederates.
Oh, my.
Passing them around, and I just have another minute to say something. Our Union doesn't just do battles the whole time, it's living history. We do Meager Days, we camp down there. We educate the people that General Custer, as we all know General Custer, was part of what Zonacon, believe it or not, and he actually built Military Road, one of the Military Roads, all the way up to Fort Mellingham, and he has a log cabin up there, so you can go visit it. All this rich history is what we bring to the Meager Day, the church and Boy Scout groups, which I want to bring here to Fort Orchard. And the live firing that we do, we're all certified on safety, the firing of weapons, all of us. I'm also certified to do cannon, the five positions of the cannon. I'm also certified to do ground explosive, and a little thing that would pop up from the ground when you hear the cannon going off. But like I said, we're all certified to fire muskets. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Well, I would only have one question, and I just, you know, I think this is a great idea. How will people be able to watch the skirmishes on Bay Street?
So, they'd be lining up on the sidewalks, and we would, it would be basically like a little skit, where we'd come in as if we were marching, as if a mini-battle started, you know? One is coming into one end of the town, one is coming to the other, and they weren't expecting each other, and all of a sudden, oh my goodness, there's the Confederates, we have to fight them. So, like I said, it'd just be a little skirmish, we both know about it, we'd have a little skit, and, you know, we could even do little things like get the shop owners involved. We just, we do a lot of little skits in the towns where we go. We used to do a lot of them up at Port Gamble, which is Victorian town, perfect, right on the ocean, right on the water, you know, if we ever got, we always thought about having like a big old naval ship come in, and, you know, because they did have the Navy during the Civil War. So, we, you know, we would just involve, you know, as many people that wanted to get in on it, you know, if the shopkeepers wanted to get in on it, you know, we would, we would do all kinds of things, like, you know, have somebody get shot, have people steal things, you know, and just, and they'd all be, you know, part of it, it wouldn't be anybody getting hurt or stealing anything, they'd all be reenactors, it would all be, you know, that kind of thing. So, we talked to everybody head to hand, we have a script, and it'd all be about safety, we're always about safety.
The one thing that they would like to do is come in on Friday, late afternoon, and set up all of their equipment on Friday to where it's ready to roll on Saturday. The vendor show would be going on on Friday, but they would be coming in that late afternoon or whenever they decide to get here, but they would be camping Friday night and Saturday night, given the permission that we're, that we're seeking. And so, you don't have to give us an answer tonight unless you're ready to just jump out there and say, "Go for it, Sharon, it's okay," we'd like that, but I'm not going to put you to that test tonight.
I have a couple of questions, and I was wondering why you weren't going to do it in the parking lot behind, rather than asking to close Bay Street. Closing Bay Street is very problematic for us. I also, when I looked at your pictures, and I saw all the grass, I wondered why you weren't taking this to a location like Van Zee Park, where there's grass and it's bigger, and, you know, I think there'd be more opportunity for people to walk around.
So, we looked at the park up there, it's a little bit steep, oh, sorry. It's a little bit steep, for one thing, the other thing is, it's out of downtown, and Sharon and I talked a lot about this before we came to make the presentation, the slides, everything. It's kind of a nice place to park, to camp, but it's steep, and I can tell you myself, if I'm camping in a Civil War town, having a little bit of slope, you don't stay in your cot, you end up on the ground, that's one part of it. The other part of it is, the public wouldn't go up there. You know, part of, part of the whole living history thing is for them to walk through a camp, to see the tents, to see the hospital, to look at the, look at the displays that we have. I mean, we put out a lot of displays, we have, one lady has her master's degree in Civil War clothing, she has all kinds of period dresses and undergarments, and we have Civil War toys, we have, I mean, we have people that have all kinds of weapons, and, I mean, you name it, we, we can put on huge displays of tables of just our own personal things, so, I mean...
The other thing that I'm curious about is, I don't understand where the grass is by the city's boat launch.
So, you know where the picnic tables are, right in front of...
Right over here, where the restroom is.
Isn't that port? Isn't that the port property?
Yeah, that's the port.
That's port property.
They told us it was, the city owned it.
Well, are you talking about the grassy area in front of the marina, or are you talking about over here at the boat launch?
Both of them, yeah.
When we met with Kathy, she was all in favor of us bringing the whole show, but she said that you maintained the grassy area by the Port of Bermerton, and we needed to seek your permission to set up camp there.
Your only permission will be to close the road, everything else, it sounds like is on port property.
Interesting.
I designed that boat launch, so I definitely know that that's...
The reason for the grassy area, of course, is so we can put stakes in with our campus.
Sure, sure.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see where the issue is, it's, like with Beck, the only issue is going to be, we're going to be closing the road now, yet another day, and...
Two hours.
The time doesn't make any difference.
It takes, yeah, it's the DOT and Washington State Patrol, I mean, that's going to be the only challenge, is we kind of continually close the road for so many events, and it takes a long time to actually set up detours, to do the shutdown, to reopen, I mean, it's a lot of work.
I totally get that.
So, the thing about, about the skirmish downtown, it's, it's sort of historically accurate, you know, it's how it would have happened, you know, they're coming in, it's just an idea, I mean, it's, it's a skit, it's how it would have happened, so they're coming into opposite ends, people are already in the downtown area, on the sidewalks, it's just sort of a way to give them, to place them in an area downtown, to really put them in, in the event. That's one idea. Parking lot, then you're going to take up all the parking, that whole parking lot's going to have to be completely empty, and it's going to have to be the same kind of thing, where they're going to, Confederates come in from one end, and Union comes in from the other, but you're going to have to empty out an entire parking lot to be able to do that. So, I mean, either way, you're going to, you're going to displace somebody or something, so, I mean, you need, because you need to have a safety net, you cannot, even though we're only firing back black powder, you have to have so many feet away from anybody who is going to be near a black powder being fired.
So, for clarification, I know we'll be looking at the event application later, but, so, putting the tents in the grass at both facilities, that's the port's decision, you're not doing anything for the boat launch, boat launch is still going to be operating, open and operating, because that's summer.
Right.
Are you talking about Lot 1 and Lot 2? The parking lot, the four-hour parking, are you doing anything with the four-hour parking?
No, just mainly the grassy areas for them to put their tents on for the overnight, and the overlook would be for whatever they're designing out there.
Just our tables for displays.
And various others. We possibly would end up having a children's activity area in the vendor show, where the children would be able to come in and make period dolls, they've got however they do that.
We have Civil War period toys, we have, we, the kids used to make church dolls, we have like a photo display, we have a lot of family-friendly kid events we can do within the Civil War period, where a lot of ladies will bring their shawls, their parasols, their bonnets, and give, you know, dress up the little girls, and then their moms take pictures of them with the little boys, and even the little girls will jump in, and even the dads jump in. We have these wooden, they're just solid wood muskets, and we teach the little boys how to march, and now it's even the little girls or anybody that wants to get in, the parents get in on it. We give them a certificate, they've learned how to march. So, I mean, we do a lot of family-friendly kids, so it would be, it would be a way to keep the families downtown for the whole weekend, because we would be here for the entire weekend, doing a lot of events with Civil War, I mean, around the Civil War period, so...
And the vendors, vendors are setting up in Lot 4?
That's all from Bay Street. From the gazebo all the way over to Amy's.
Yeah, that's Lot 3 and 4. Okay, so Lot 2, 1 and 2, which is the main parking, the four-hour parking between Harrison, Frederick, and Sidney, is still going to be open for parking.
Yeah, that's all would be open for parking, only the on-street would be utilized for tents.
What about parking, so, there's no parking on Bay Street during the parade, we have to clear all the cars out?
Correct.
So, we'll have to do that for that two-hour period again.
And as Roy said, when I talked to him about it, I said, "Well, if a car doesn't get moved," he said, "Well, don't tow it," he said, "We could work around it."
Have you, have you thought about doing your presentation prior to the parade, when the, when it's, when the street is already closed, and Public Works has already done all they need to do, because they close the street about 5:00, and the parade doesn't start till about 6:00?
Yeah.
So, and you have people there already, so, did you think about that? Because I, quite honestly, I'm, I'm having trouble closing Bay Street again. I mean, that's just, it's just difficult for us to do, and, and I have hesitation with that, so I'm trying to think of different alternatives for you.
Yeah.
We, we looked at the grassy area over at the gazebo area, which really isn't ample for what they need to do for a skirmish, so the option of then was to, well, okay, let's see if we could do Sunday. If we can't do Sunday, we hadn't talked about the parade, because all of us involved are so many other places that, that no one on the Fathoms Board would technically ever get to see any kind of a skirmish, because our day is completely full to go elsewhere, and so, we kind of were selfish, would like to see it too.
That's what video's for.
Yeah.
Can you tell me more about your company, how long you've done this, and why did you pick the Civil War?
Almost all of us are pretty much history geeks, we all like the Victorian period. A lot of our reenactors, I mean, we have kids up to, I mean, many retirees, who actually love, love history, love the period, yeah, he's, he's our biggest kid. And, you know, some people play both sides, I mean, he plays General Lee, he plays Confederate for the First Texas, and he also plays Free Indian. So, and one of the things Roy will say is, you know, when he sees little kids running around, he's like, "That's how I feel when I'm out there, I love it," you know, and I think it's mainly that we love history, we love, it's, one of the stories I always tell is, we go to the Auburn Veterans Day Parade in our reenacting outfits, and it always brings me to tears when the veterans in their wheelchairs stand up and salute us.
That's amazing.
It brings me to tears every single time. We are reenacting the Civil War era and the Revolutionary War era, and they're saluting us, and we're saluting them, and it's just, you know, it's, we do it because it's, it's history, it happened, we should never forget history, and we do it because we love the era, we love the history. A lot of the reenactors will go and do World War II reenacting, but that's very private, you know, World War II reenactors, they just go off in the woods and they just do their own thing, there's no spectators. Where we loved, I mean, you come to, come to a Civil War reenactment, we'll talk your leg off, I mean, we'll talk to you for months at a time, you ask us a question, and we don't shut up. I mean, we, we can talk to you about any part of it, we love it so much, and, and Sharon got to, Sharon's like, "Oh, my God," so she had been to her first one, and that's why we didn't want to come dressed up, we wanted you to kind of get a little taste for it, and we just thought it would be fun, because a lot of people have never been to a reenactment. We can't do a full-on reenactment, because the town is too small, we don't really have a big space to do it. We would love to do a full reenactment for you, but there's not enough space here to do it. That's why we thought a little skirmish is fun, because it gives you a little idea of just a little bit of what it's like, and the fact that we can do some living history and do a little Civil War ball for you, and, you know, we can be dressed up, and anybody in the community can join in and dance. It's kind of like a square dance, you know, we call the dances, and we do all of our parts, and, you know, everybody can just come, you know, we don't care what you're dressed like, just come down to the, come down to the pavilion and dance with us, you know, and it's just a way to step back in time and be, be part of it for a while, you know?
So, another piece of history, one of our 18-year-olds did research on his ancestor, and he found out Slaughter was his last name, and he did some more research, and found out that after the Civil War, he moved back to the city northwest, and he formed a town. Well, the town wasn't going to be named after him, because, you know, Slaughter for a town, it didn't make sense. So, anybody have an idea what they named the town? They named it Auburn.
Oh, hmm.
And that's the kind of history we teach here in the city northwest. We have a rich history, we just don't know it, and it's not taught in school, we just don't have time to do it, they got math and English, you know, so, this is what we do. And as far as the games down there, what are we going to do with the kids? I could bring, how many of you know what a monkey bridge is?
I think I do.
Well, it's a trail, it's a canyon, and it's got rope here, rope here, and rope here, and you walk the path like that, the monkey bridge, well, I'd have to build up the Boy Scouts, and they go nuts over them, they don't even play with the other toys. So, if we have room on a grassy area, I can put one of those up.
And it's like, you know, when the kids come on Friday nights, these kids of reenactors, you know, they're just going crazy, because they're put their electronics away, there's no TV, there's no computer, and they go crazy on Friday, they're just cranky, and then you see them out there running around, playing period baseball, and playing the period games, and, you know, playing with the other kids, and writing on a chalkboard, and it's like they go back in time, and all that stress of modern goes away, and you're out on a field, and you don't see anything that's modern, and you're just hanging out and, you know, sitting on a hay bale, and talking to other kids, and watching everybody in period clothes, and it's like you step back in time, and everything just goes away, and you're back in the 1850s, it's...
So, thank you very much, I think you've heard some concerns, and I think it's up to you to try and figure out what you want to do and what's best, so we'll look forward to reviewing your application, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Roy is from Puyallup, and Deb is a Fort Orchard person. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, 6A, a public hearing on the proposed 2019 and 2020 biennial budget by Mr. Crocker.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, a public hearing on the 2019-2020 biennial budget is required on or before the first Monday of December. The hearing allows Council to hear public input, consider public comments, and make any changes as indicated by the majority of the Council. Citizens and community organizations are encouraged to participate by providing the Council with their input for future infrastructure priorities, public safety enhancements, cultural and recreational opportunities, and public services. Following citizen comment, the public hearing will be closed, and the Council may continue with its deliberations concerning the 1920 biennial budget. If the Council has any additional changes, these should be conveyed to staff so that the 1920 budget can be presented for final adoption on November 27, 2018. And for you tonight, I have provided you each a detail of the final proposed budget, with all the adjustments that we've discussed over the last three, four weeks, including, I've continued to roll out the summary sheet, which includes all the Council adjustments on the back page that we discussed during our interviews with department heads. So, with that, you guys now have the full, complete budget before you in your hands. We have also posted the preliminary budget on the web, as well as we've already conducted our revenue hearings. So, if that staff would recommend opening the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now open. We don't have anybody who's testified, who's signed up to testify, is there anybody from the audience who'd like to testify on the proposed budget? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to business items, 7A, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Tiara Rightaway Services Limited for the continuation of Bay Street Pedestrian Passways Project Real Estate Professional Acquisition Services Director Dorsey. Pedestrian Pathways Project Real Estate Professional Acquisition Services Director Dorsey. Page forty-one in our packet.
Thank you.
One second, we were talking budget. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Potem, Council members.
In response to the 2016 federal single audit on May fourth, and May eleventh, 2018, the city's Public Works Department published a request for non-A and E professional services qualifications for the continuation of the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project Real Estate Professional Acquisition Services. By the May eighteenth, 2018 deadline, no statement of qualifications were received. The city consulted with the Department of Transportation local programs, and were advised that we needed to select a firm from the Department of Transportation's right-of-way consultant roster, develop a scope and budget, and submit a sole source request to the Department of Transportation for approval. Having followed the prescribed procedure, the city's Public Works Department has selected Tiara Rightofway Services Limited for the continuation of the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Real Estate Acquisition Services in the amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. And just on the fiscal impact, that funding is within the budget, and that amount is basically what Universal Field Services had remaining in their budget when we did the original contract. So, staff recommends adoption of a resolution thereby approving a contract with Tiara Rightofway Services Limited for the continuation of the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project Real Estate Professional Acquisition Services in the amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Thank you. Councilmember LeGrue?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Tiara Rightofway Services LTD for the continuation of the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project Real Estate Professional Acquisition Services in the amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, McLaughlin. Any discussion? Councilmember Ash.
Yes, and my discussion isn't necessarily on this particular contract. I'm glad that you've found a firm that you're, um, to, to move us forward on this. My concern is we're going to have some new appraisals. Do we anticipate, um, that those values will be greater than the last time we had the properties appraised?
Uh, yes, absolutely. So, so, so the right-of acquisition phase and the funding that we have, the federal funding we have really was for, I think we had two-point-two million at one point. And the, we purchased, luckily, Segment Two, which was the park. Segment Four, we didn't need anything. Segment Five was donated. Segment Two was donated, and Three, we had acquisitions. Those were all, they followed the project funding estimate fairly closely. Where we have overspent due to the economic activity or increase in the area, the two houses that we actually, the two that we purchased, um, the very first house on the left and the very last house, those were higher because the values had gone up. And then there were tenants in the last house. There was actually two tenants, and that was very expensive because we were required to pay their rent for three years and relocate them. And so, we, we have plenty of money to get the right-of-way acquisition phase done through the, the agent. We'll have to make some decisions on actual acquisitions as we get to the remaining acquisitions and look at options. Um, we can either, we'll know better. We'll, we'll have to redo the appraisals. So, you know, we got to a point, and then we had the issue with the audit, so we had to stop. So those became stale. The good news is this firm has rehired the appraiser from the previous, so they're not starting from scratch. Um, so, yeah, I, I think we're going to come up short in the funding that we have, so the city can either find additional funding in 2020, 2021, um, 2022, um, or, you know, we may not need to potentially purchase all five of the homes. And that's kind of, uh, what we've talked about in the past, is having a potential alternative to the, to the one home, um, given kind of, when the Council, when we did that survey to see who was willing and who wasn't, four of the, four out of the five were. And so, the fifth, we know that, you know, it may be a condemnation, which at that point would pretty much really kill the budget. So, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it.
I'm just pleased to see us moving forward again.
Yes.
I mean, we're working on the path, I know, but, yeah.
Yes. So, yeah, that's a good question, is the, you know, we've got, you know, funding remaining, but I don't think it's going to get us to the end. And unfortunately, we can't go back to PSRC and ask for money for the same phase. It's against the, it's against the rules. Any further discussion? Okay. We have a motion for adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Tiara Rightofway Services Limited for the continuation of Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Project Real Estate Professional Acquisition Services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Item Seven B, approval of the October sixteen, 2018 Council Work Study Session Minutes. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the October sixteenth work-study minutes.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Um, all those in favor of adoption of the, uh, October sixteen minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Abstention.
One abstention, okay. One abstention. All right, minutes are approved. Okay, we're on to Business Item Seven C, which is a discussion of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for the 2019 funding allocation. Ms. Ray Nelson?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Potem, Council. So on September twenty-seventh, 2018, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee heard presentations from applicants who requested funds for 2019 from the hotel motel tax. On October fourth, the committee met to discuss the applications and to provide a counsel with a recommendation of those allocations. On October ninth, council discussed the committee's recommendation of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which used twenty-five thousand of the fund balance slash reserve. Council expressed concerns of cash flow, spending money we don't have, allocating funds at this amount is not sustainable, and fun, funds may not come in as anticipated. Therefore, remanded back to the committee for them to only allocate a hundred thousand. Should the committee continue with a hundred and twenty-five thousand allocation, it would be with the understanding that only hun, that only seventy-five thousand would be allocated in year 2020. On October twenty-second, the committee met to discuss council's comments. The committee didn't want to risk the nonprofits having less funds for the following year, and directed staff to reach out to them to get their input on their preference. On November fifth, 2018, the committee reconvened to discuss responses received from the applicants. At the recommendation of the nonprofits, the committee reallocated the funds totaling a hundred thousand. They are Visit Kitsap, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars; Portertrid Bay Street Association for Operations and Events, fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars; Portertrid Bay Street Association for Tourism Marketing, seven thousand, six hundred and ninety; Sydney Museum and Arts Association for Tourism Marketing, five thousand, seventy dollars; Fathoms of Fun Festival Events for Operations and Marketing, twenty-one thousand, five hundred, thirty-two dollars; Kitsap Mustang Club for the Mustangs on the Waterfront, two thousand, five hundred dollars; Saints Car Club, the Cruise, two thousand, four hundred dollars; Chamber of Commerce for the Seagull Calling Festival Tourism Visiting Marketing and Visitor Center Operations, twenty-two thousand, ten dollars; the City of Port Orchard Summer Event, Foot Fairy Services, six thousand, five hundred dollars, for a total of one hundred thousand dollars allocation for the year 2019. Staff is looking for direction from the council as if they want to bring this forward to the next council meeting for adoption and to be included in the budget, or to bring this to a next work-study council for further discussion.
Thank you. So what is the council's pleasure?
I would defer to the committee chair.
I think we should go ahead and move it forward. Um, I think the committee, uh, did a very good job with Brandy's guidance in, uh, coming to a solution, considering we don't have all the funds that are available that the nonprofits requested. Um, the two things that were in the, in the packet, one was that, uh, putting together a policy to look at this with, uh, whether we want to look at reserves or surplus down the road, and also at mid-year, looking to see how funds are coming in, and see if we want to have the committee, uh, get together again. So, committee was very appreciative of the council and the mayor, uh, coming forth with that. And so I think we're at a place where we should move forward.
Further discussion?
I agree with moving it forward for adoption.
All right, we have direction to bring it forward. Thank you. The next item is yours as well, updating the Destination Port Orchard video.
Eighteen Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting, it was mentioned that the Destination Port Orchard video is outdated and should be updated. At the September tenth Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting, the video was reviewed, and the committee agreed that it needed to be updated. The committee asked the mayor to bring a contract to the council in October for a consultant to prepare for these revisions. The mayor reached out to the video creator for a quote. That quote was provided to the council at the October ninth meeting. Council directed the mayor to reach out to seek information about creating a video which would include tourism, visitors, and economic opportunities, all with being less than ninety seconds, and to seek other quotes. At the November seventh Economic Development Tourism Committee meeting, three quotes were presented along with video samples of each of the consultant's work. The bids are as follows: Howl Cowbum, nine thousand, five hundred, not including tax; Northwoods Production, nine thousand, nine hundred, seventeen dollars and fifty cents, not including tax; EVI Productions, five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, not including tax. In reviewing the quotes and videos, the committee felt that each of the consultant's work were equally good. They didn't feel that they could justify moving forward with a higher quotes. Therefore, the committee recommends proceeding with the lowest bid. The Economic Development Tourism Committee recommends city staff to move forward with the contract of EV, contract for EVI production services.
Any discussion?
Um, what I would say at the Economic Development Tourism meeting, when we discuss this, we felt the first question that we needed to ask and have an answer for was, is, do we want to move forward with the video? And we had talked about three videos. We wanted, um, and if I'm misstating this to the other two committee members, we wanted to make sure that we were all on board moving forward. Um, again, we felt that all three had the qualifications to do the job we needed done. And so I don't think we were hesitant at all about awarding to the lowest bidder. We just wanted to make sure that council wanted us to move forward with the project. And I believe we were looking for a finished project, um, next summer. We were thinking that, uh, actually doing the, the shoot would need to take place when we had nice weather. Um, so that was kind of our, what, what our thinking was, and why we brought it back to council, just to get an affirmation that we want to move forward.
Councilmember LeGrue?
I'm also, um, wondering if we could produce the video after we're done with some of our projects. You know, done with Tremont, of course, um, the park, you know, the, the pathway moving through the park, McCormick Woods. When those are cleaned up, when we have the landscaping out, so if we need to wait even a little bit longer to capture some of that, I would be in favor of that because there's so much that's going to be happening and going to be finished next year.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion just so we can continue discussion. I think we should probably have a motion on this at first. So I, I would move to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with EVI Productions to produce videos promoting the City of Port Orchard.
Second.
Second, more discussion?
I, I just, logistically, um, we have money this biennial budget and money next biennial budget. So, we need to be able to, um, and we've got two finance, you know, Brandy's going to figure out, Noah's going to have to figure out how we can get everything we need done and have the appropriate amount of money to spend at the right timeframe.
We, we did talk about that, making sure that if we slipped this a little bit, we can catch, catch some of the improvements, capture those.
Is the expectation that this will be all-new footage, or is there some plan to utilize some of the existing footage we have with the current video?
I think it was all-new footage.
Yeah.
I think it was all-new footage. And what we talked about, we're, as we discussed at our council meeting here a while back, is three separate videos, each about ninety seconds, capturing a different audience. And I'm, I'm assuming that a lot of the, um, film they get will be used in all three, and we would hope that they would get enough footage that they can create an additional video if we needed at a later time.
So did the RFP include that kind of a, that result of this project, that we'd have three completed videos and ready to go? I'm assuming it did.
Yes, three separate videos based on the, um, criteria.
And then the only other question I would ask is just to make sure that at the completion, the city owns the video, that it's not, you know, the videographer that has it, that we just get to use it.
I will confirm that upon, um, when we enter into the contract, that the city actually owns the footage or the videos. Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You know, I was just going to say that in answer to a couple of, not concerns, but one of the reasons it wasn't going into next summer was because of the fact of all the projects sent me that you were talking about, plus, you know, the good weather and trees being, you know, and blossom and stuff, all the good things, you know, that are happening. Uh, but they can work on things like scripts now and, uh, pre-production. So that's some of the areas where they can, you know, spend the money this year. So I, I think moving forward, this is, is very positive. Some of the footage that we talked about, John, when you were talking about that, was, is considered dated and, and stuff. So, it was, it was a good looking at their, their product beforehand and seeing what they offered.
I'll also add that we got a chance to look at a video that I don't think we've seen as a group, which was put together by the Port of Bremerton, which was very well done, and, um, wasn't geared just towards port operations, as you might imagine, but was really geared towards, geared towards a broader area of South Kitsap, this area. And so we are, I think, looking into seeing whether we can have that linked on our website as well.
And I can play that later on, um, during my department director's report, if you'd like, and get it pulled up and show you the Port of Bremerton one.
It wasn't that long.
Yeah.
We also spent some time talking about distribution of the videos and having them not just on our website, but, um, we need a, a, a plan for distribution and make sure they're available to a lot of places or everyone, yeah.
Gets back to your earlier comment of knowing who your audience is, where's the market?
Yeah.
Where's the company-based, EVI? Are they local?
I believe federal, like.
Sounds right.
They're out of Federal Way, and then they've done, uh, the City of Gigg Harbor, um, and they've done a couple other videos.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? With that, we'll move on to Item Seven E. That's the item that I...
Want to vote on that.
Do we need to vote on this?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Um, if Rob were gone more often, I'd be more familiar with the process. Okay, um, is, uh, let's see. All those in favor of moving this forward, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the Item Seven E was, uh, is, uh, in response to an article that I, I caught, and I think some others may have caught, in the Kitsap sun about, um, the Bremerton Raceway, the, the funding that it's seeking through Kitsap Public Facilities in the neighborhood of ten to twenty million dollars. And, uh, some jurisdictions showed up apparently and had heartache with how the process had been going, um, and felt like that they needed to sort of, as they say in the article, level the playing field. in the article, level the playing field. And they deferred action, I think, until December 3. And I'll read to you, it's the same night that other, the other eight project applicants will have an opportunity to give their presentations. And Port Orchard Community Center is listed as one of those eight projects. And I hadn't heard anything about that. And I was just wondering what we know about that.
That, that was an old discussion. Has anyone heard anything recently? That's from how many years ago?
A while ago.
Very long time ago, when there was research being done about how to fund something like that. There was a lot of interest, but the fees would be quite high and there was a funding problem. So I think it was kind of just tabled.
Okay. So the article is from November 12th, but it sounds like then this is just an old list that they've kept populated and they really have not updated this.
Yeah, I don't know where they found that information. I've never heard of it.
Not recently. Becca?
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not an expert by any means and I'm working from memory, but there was, the City Board Orchard was excluded from public facilities funding for a while because we didn't have a project. And we identified a project so that we could get included into the potential for funding from the PFD. So I think that was the project that we collectively submitted as well, just so that we're eligible for FDI funding.
Okay.
But like I said, I, I'm working from memory and I can't remember what I had for lunch today, so.
What I would recommend we do is follow up and, and bring something back because the way I read that article is it is something current. And I don't know that any, that it has to be anything that was put forward by the City of Port Orchard. It could be put forward by any group that would be doing a public facility. So maybe we can do some more research and get back.
Sure. It has the City of Port Orchard listed as a project component.
Oh, it does it?
I think what we should probably do is maybe from staff could call Mike Walton, the executive director of the PFD, and just let them know that we're not planning on providing a presentation on that day in case they think we're going to be on the agenda and, right? If they think we're, the city's coming to give a presentation, just out of respect, let them know that.
Right, do some follow-up, yeah.
I think the mayor would be more appropriate to follow up on it, so. Get some pressure off you, Brandy. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. With that, we're on to report of council committees. Any with finance?
Currently, the finance committee does not have anything scheduled, but I'm going to take advantage of this time just to share with the council a couple parking issues. I received a letter from Sylvia Gleichman who raised a concern regarding Orlando Street and parking and potential conflicts. It's up of only, it goes up behind the Kmart Shopping Center up that hill. And there's some issues with parking. We have it posted, no parking on one side of the street, south side, I believe. And we allow parking on the north side, but there's not enough room to park on the north side without either being on the wrong side of the fog line or being on top of what is identified as a sidewalk. And essentially what she's asked for is, and she raises another issue that we're in conflict with some RCWs, the way we have it posted. So I would suggest we turn this over to one of our committees to look at and we can have Mark provide information to that committee and then the committee can decide and come back. And then I think we all received a letter from Bay Street regarding the issue of parking along the Etta Turner Park. And I thought, you know, at least we could take that one on as well in the committee and at least develop an appropriate response.
We can get an update on that here in a little bit.
Well, the, so the Etta Turner Park is actually being discussed at the work study next week along with two other issues. I already responded on the only. I responded directly to her questions.
Okay, so you got a copy of the letter that I...
The mayor sent the...
If you could forward me a copy of your response, that would be helpful. At least I could respond back to Sylvia.
Yeah, well, I responded to Sylvia.
I know, but if I could see what your response was, then my response can kind of incorporate what you were saying.
Okay, anything else, John?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Economic Development and Tourism?
Yes, we met on the 7th and you just about heard our whole meeting this, this evening. We talked, first our item was the video. And we looked at videos, discussed the applicants, and you got all that this evening. Then we did an update on the single-use plastic bag reduction that we're looking at and continued our due diligence with that. And then we had a report from our LTAC committee and, which we also discussed this evening. And that was basically our committee meeting. And we'll be meeting again December 10th, 9:30 here at City Hall.
Okay. Utilities.
So, we have that we were going to be meeting November 19th at 9:30 a.m. I was just asking the director if that was a very important meeting because a number of people have already committed to an event with ribbon cutting for the finest. Apparently, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is more of an update and it, nothing is time-sensitive. So we could move forward with having this meeting in December if there's no problem with everybody. Then that way, we can continue to make our commitments, meet our commitments if you have for going to the ribbon cutting. So, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
December 15th.
Okay, so that our next meeting will be December 15th then, here at City Hall. And that will be at 9:30 a.m. And we will not, we were postponing our November 19th meeting.
Okay. Sewer advisory?
That meeting will be actually tomorrow, November 14th, 6:30. There's a mistake here. It will not be at City Hall. It will be at the sewer plant. And that's a special meeting.
Okay, we're going to skip land use for just a moment and go on to lodging tax advisory.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, good work.
Thank you.
Festival of Chimes and Lights.
We will be meeting November 19th, 3:30 p.m. at City Hall. I want to let everyone know that we did get a first place for events, which is very fun.
Cool.
That came from us, thank you, staff and everyone else who's been involved in finance for this event. The trees have arrived and as you've seen downtown, they're in the planters and people have started decorating. So we're very excited to see the outcome of that. Next Wednesday at 5:30, Santa will be downtown with Mrs. Santa judging the trees. And you saw the, the large tree out in front. Okay, take a peek. It's a beautiful tree. Special thanks to Public Works, Bill Thiel, and all of you who've done such a good job. Brandy and Janine have done so much work on this and in coordinating this. And we're just grateful that this is going to be one of the best events ever. That's what I just said.
Not, not the small ones downtown, I'm talking about the big ones.
But I just said that, yeah.
I thought you were talking about the smaller trees.
No, the big one.
She said both.
I got 20% hearing loss, so.
Selective hearing loss.
Where my hearing is.
You only heard 20% of what you said, is that it?
I heard 80%.
All right. Are there any outside agency committee reports?
No, I just remind that the KRCC Legislative Reception is the 29th, November 29th.
And I guess I would just add, since Cindy brought it up, the ceremonial ribbon cutting on the 19th, just to remind folks, you're all welcome to join us in Kingston. And we've got, the governor is going to be there to help us kick it off. And Representative Kilmer will be a part of it. So, should be a fun morning.
Okay. So we'll jump back to land use. And the reason I punted this a little bit was because we're going to have a little more discussion about the tax, multifamily tax abatement program. But, so we, we had, I think, four items on the agenda that day. And we'll save the tax abatement discussion for last. And you've got a handout from Director Bond that looks like this. The, one item we talked about was the Lund Avenue Bridge and what could we do to make that safer for people who are contemplating ending their lives. And there's a change.org petition that's floating around. Last count, I think there were something like 60 or so people who had wanted the city to do something about that. And Mark observed that this is about a million-dollar fix. The chief observed that the amount of activity that, that dismays people is really infrequent. I think he'd said a couple in 11 years. So, plus the fact that if people really are committed to ending their lives, they're going to find a way to do it. So, it wasn't the brightest of discussions we had, but we, we decided that we weren't going to pursue a, a bridge, safety net of some sort at this time. And then we talked about parking code. We have had a concern about the parking along Bay Street in front of Holland Sun's Car Repair Facility there. And so we're going to try and mitigate that by, by posting that as no parking.
We'll be discussing that next week.
We'll be discussing this.
By council, take action.
Right, along...
On Bay Street?
Yeah, right there. Do you know where that is?
Uh huh.
Okay. And then we also talked about the Etta Turner Park parking situation. And we had the chief who presented his concerns and who really feels that, among other reasons, it's important to be kept open for visibility. You park there, it kind of provides a shield, if you will, for activities that people are concerned about. And also, it was observed that it is in fact a right-of-way and we need to have adequate ingress, egress out of there. So those kinds of things stack up against allowing continued parking along the park there. But we, we will be talking more about that. And then the third parking item was a no parking zone along a portion of Tracy Avenue North. And Mark's going to look into that a little bit more as well.
I actually have a solution on that that I can talk about next week. It's a much simpler solution, so.
Okay.
Where on Tracy, where they concerned?
Where on?
103, 210, 2...
Give her...
Remember the address of that?
Do you, do you remember?
I can't remember the address. It was, it was one...
House south of, I think it was Guy Wetzel on Tracy. It was, it was, it was one house or two houses south of, one house south of past council member Owen's duplex. Anyway, it, it was a singular issue. We're going to address it globally and not have any impact to what we achieve with the no parking from DeKalb to Guy Wetzel, which was the high school parking. There's really no place to park on that road. I drove up and down. There's only two areas where you could even park. And we actually have two-hour parking that's in the right-of-way, but it's literally just kind of a grassy, gravelly area. And I'm not proposing to take that down. Think, well, I'll let the cat out of the bag. I'm proposing that we just stripe it because it's one of our more major collectors. And we use it for a lot of our detours. And we will be using it for Annapolis Creek and Bay Street pedestrian pathway. So, simple solution is that we just stripe the fog line. And once that's done, then there's no ability for anybody to park. So Tracy, other than those two parking stalls in front of that duplex that are four-hour, and then those kind of two little two-hour parking areas, it doesn't change anything because we actually went up at night to see if there's anybody actually parking. And there's nobody parking on the street. This was a singular incident in front of a house that recently sold that just perpetuated itself to the solution. So, we'll just add it to our striping. Okay. Then the last item that we talked about in the meeting was our land disturbing activity permits and how we provide for erosion control and stormwater management. So it was just a brief overview of, of how that's done. And there was a, a recent problem with the residential project. And so I think maybe there was some concern. And so we were given a, a brief primer on that. The item that had most discussion was the multifamily tax abatement request from a, a company to locate development on the east side of Fred Meyer. We're looking at, we're talking about 113 apartments on eight and a quarter acres. They really feel that for the project to pencil out, they need this abatement. And this, I think, prompted Director Bond to think about how the multifamily tax abatement could be applied to other areas in the city. And in so doing, he checked in with other jurisdictions, including the city, which they've designated all of their comprehensive plan local centers as tax abatement areas. So that's part of the discussion tonight. Is that something that we want to talk about doing? Of course, there are some PSRC goals that this helps support, but it also encourages affordable housing in areas that need both the revitalization and economic development. Let's see. Also, the discussion is should we be considering these on a case-by-case basis, or should we be looking at this across our centers, center-wide, so to speak? And Nick, feel free to jump in if you have anything you'd like to add.
So, so when, when we received this request, it occurred to us that we don't have any criteria for evaluating when we should or should not amend our map for multifamily tax abatement. And when we initially adopted that, if you remember, we kind of took the area along Highway 166 downtown, up Bethel, and then out Mile Hill, only within our, our locally designated centers in the comprehensive plan. But we left the, the rest of the city sort of out of that area. But in any event, we have a request for this property next to Fred Meyer. We don't have any criteria other than what's in state law for whether we should or should not designate it. Council has total discretion on whether to approve it. So when I got the request, I reached out to Bremerton and talked to my counterpart there about how they would handle a request. And they said, well, we don't have to. All of our centers are designated for multifamily tax abatement because according to state law, it has to be a, a local growth center, which is not a defined term. But, but in state law, it says that you can designate this in urban growth centers. And so they've, they've read that to mean any locally designated center in their comprehensive plan. I started checking with other jurisdictions and several other cities. Both Tacoma and Kirkland require, are, basically have designated all of their centers for multifamily tax abatement. Seattle actually has as well, but they, they've actually done all of the multifamily zones in the city as, for tax abatement. Where I learned that we have some significant changes and we actually, we, we granted tax abatement for one project since 2015 when this was enacted, and that's the Overlook Apartments up behind Kmart. When they called, asking about how this was implemented, this is our first kind of run-through, what we realized is that the median income for the Silverdale-Bremerton census area is, is fairly high and rents in Port Orchard are regionally fairly low. And so what we figured out was that essentially market rate apartments in Port Orchard qualify for tax abatement. And, and they qualify for the 12-year tax abatement because a new two-bedroom apartment isn't renting for more than about 15 or 1600 dollars a month, which is still considered affordable based on 120% of the median income. So when we started looking at, at how other cities are handling this, I think the Seattle example is really good because they, they're really trying to get affordable housing in return for providing this abatement. And in, in the affordability requirements, you see that for a, a micro-type apartment, or they call it a small efficiency congregate unit, the unit has to be affordable to somebody making 30% of, or 40% of median income based on 30% of their income going to rent. Likewise, for a studio, it's a 65% threshold. It's a 75% threshold for one bedrooms and an 85 for two or more bedrooms. And so that, essentially for a single person, is a range of rent from 462 for a micro unit up to 1,228 for a two-bedroom unit where the, the family size is one person. And so my thought is that the city may want to consider changing the thresholds for what we're targeting. And it really kind of depends on what our, what is our purpose for multifamily tax abatement. If our, if our intent is to provide more affordable housing, or, or housing that's affordable to people in a different segment of the income scale, we should consider looking at adjusting this. If our goal is only to see the development of our centers, maybe we should consider designating all of our centers for this type of development to encourage development consistent with our, our local center goals. which through PSRC says you have to have a certain number of jobs and housing units per acre within your local center. And so, I guess, you know, there's, there's a couple of things we can do here. We could bring forward a proposed ordinance for this one property, and discuss it, and move forward under our existing framework. Or, if the council thought that the land use committee or another committee ought to look at a proposed ordinance to expand to include all centers, or to change the affordability requirements to lower percentages of median income, we could also do that work, but we, we have a very full work-study agenda this month, and so, our hope was that the land use committee could work on this in December, and maybe bring it back in January as a more concrete proposal based on the thoughts and feelings of the whole council. So, that's a lot to take in, I think, right now, but if, if you have any initial thoughts or want to provide direction to the land use committee, I think it would give us a, a head start on this. And we also have a developer who is hoping to apply for building permits and be under construction in March, and so, they're hoping to get an answer on their specific proposal relatively soon.
Well, do you want to tackle this as really two issues? One is, first, are there any concerns with the applicant moving forward with what they want to do? And the second is the balance of the issues? Go ahead.
I'm, I'm fine with the application before and us dealing with it. I think the bigger issue is, needs a little bit more discussion and, and thought, because I think there's, there's a lot of issues into it. I mean, on the surface, we certainly want to provide more affordable housing, but a few years ago, when I looked into this issue, I think Port Orchard in general, and South Kitsap, provides proportionately way more than our share of affordable housing, when you look at it from a countywide perspective. And I think, you know, I think I would be more interested in kind of taking a look at some of the demographic information of what we currently have available, before we're going to try to encourage, you know, more. I think there needs to be a, a balance in a community to make it a viable community, and I'd just like to make sure we go into this with our eyes open.
One thing I'd like to ask, too, and I think this impacts, it's great that we're splitting these two discussion points up, but the point here, I think, is, is useful. I'd love to see the data of all the different, different taxing jurisdictions that are impacted by these abatements. They've asked us to keep them involved as we go, just because it can impact them, number one. And maybe we can have some sort of, just a little flow chart that basically talks about per million dollars of improvements, what that, what that looks like over eight years, 12 years, right? So, we have a better understanding of the numbers behind it. And then, when we're starting to look at maybe decreased rents, you know, kind of look at where those break-even points are, just so, I think we have more knowledge when we're talking about setting these sorts of policies. So, I don't know if Noah or Nick, or something, you could help kind of create a flow chart of...
Definitely. And actually, the, the person requesting this provided some of that information, but I think it could be presented a little bit better than what they had done.
That'd help us make better decisions based on the financial impacts that...
Yeah, we talked about...
Or unintended consequences, perhaps.
Contacting the junior taxing districts to have a better understanding of their views of this, and how this impacts them.
You know what? Oh, I was just gonna add, you, something that you said just triggered a thought. The, the other option here is that we have an eight or a 12-year, and if the goal is not to provide affordable housing, because we already have a lot of it, and actually, market-rate housing in Port Orchard is reasonably affordable, you could get rid of the 12, and just have the eight as the only option, and that would maybe provide, it's going to encourage the development of centers, and a greater mix, housing mix in terms of apartments and condos, but isn't necessarily the affordable component of it.
And that, that data may, may point to that, to say, you know, why are we doing this?
Any other discussion?
Oh, could I just ask a question? I just look at the table here, looking at these other cities, I, I just, I guess, I wonder if these are good comparables to Port Orchard? When I think about Seattle, is Seattle really a good comparable to Port Orchard, or Bremerton, as far as population size and amount of property tax revenue that they receive? So, anytime we talk about property tax abatement, I think long-term revenue implications. Anytime you abate someone for paying property taxes, that's a hit to your long-term revenue stream. So, I, I guess I'm asking Nick and the committee, are these the best comparables when we're doing this kind of financial analysis? We're talking about Tacoma, Kirkland, Redmond, Seattle, Bremerton. Those are fairly large cities, so I don't know if they have the same impact that we might have here.
I, well, I think, for one, we are just over the threshold for being eligible for tax abatement, so smaller cities than us aren't able to do tax abatement in the same way that larger cities are. And I don't think there's that many small cities that have, have actually adopted this tool. And, you know, initially, when we drew our map, it was really about redevelopment in our downtown, more so than encouraging new development or supporting our center's strategy of growth. So, I don't, I, we're going to continue looking at this. I think this is something that we put together over the last week, and we started with just Port Orchard and Bremerton, and I just happened to look at Seattle to see how they did it, because they have a much bigger affordability ha, issue facing them. And then after I had those three, I asked Carrie to find a couple of more, and these are the ones that she came up with. But I'll, I'll also look to see if any smaller cities have this.
Can you add Gig Harbor?
I don't believe they have this in place, but I will look.
They probably don't, because they have a moratorium. But it would be interesting to find out what they have, since they're one of our closest neighbors.
I would echo some of Councilman Clausen's concerns in that it feels, because I don't have any data to support it, but it feels like the south part of our county, mainly, and which encompasses the city of Port Orchard, has a disproportionate share of affordable housing. And I definitely would like to see some of our other neighbors address the issue also. And as Nick has mentioned, our market rate rentals right now would be considered affordable. So, we really need to look at this. I'm not inclined to make any decisions right now without the supporting document that, that we've asked for, yeah. But I am supportive of taking the one forward and looking at that application, doing it as a one-off.
Any other discussion? Okay.
A deeper dive at the next land use, or...
Yeah. Do you have any questions or clarifications?
I'm, I'm gonna see how the work-study agenda evolves over the next couple of days, if we have any openings where that can go forward. I would, I think it needs to go to work-study as a one-off application, as opposed to, to the committee, because it's gonna fit within the existing framework, rather than being a more robust discussion of the issues. So, if we can get it, if we can get the information to you at the next work-study, that would be the preference, because otherwise, we're waiting until January, or we're having to take it up in, directly in a meeting, which I'm not sure that you would be comfortable with that.
Okay. Report of the mayor. Well, the report of the mayor is that tomorrow's are gonna be hot with a chance of sunburn. So, nothing else. Department heads?
Just very quickly, so, so, yeah, next week, we'll be talking about these parking issues. And then, we're also having the presentation as we finish the 30% design on the Annapolis Culvert project. So, that will be your main topic for a very busy next week, I believe, at least from a time perspective, if we're allocating a full 30 minutes. That's it.
Noah? I just wanted to follow up with Councilmember Clausen. I thought we had a finance committee scheduled for next Tuesday, the 20th, before the stay session. I just want to confirm that you do or do not have that on your calendar.
No, I don't have it on my calendar.
I don't, but I'd be glad to put it there.
Yeah, I do not have it on my calendar.
I have it at 5:00.
You do have it.
On Tuesday, the 20th.
Okay. Does that work for you?
5:00 works fine.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Beck?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, then I'll make sure of that.
To the 20th.
Yep.
Yep.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Nick?
Nothing tonight.
Sharon?
Nothing tonight.
Brandy?
So, I do have the Port Orchard Marina, which is recently played. So, I don't believe it's same, part of the same production company that we're moving forward with, but the mayor did reach out to the Port of Bremerton, and I'm hoping Janine will drop the slide while I'm talking, the screen. He did reach out to the Port of Bremerton, and we're gonna put it on our website, so it should be up there, I think, just after the New Year.
Wasn't prepared, so let's hope everything works good here.
The Port Orchard Marina is perfectly situated for easy access to Puget Sound's top cruising grounds. Port Orchard Marina is friendly and accommodating, with both open and covered moorage. Port Orchard Marina is within easy walking distance to downtown shops, parks, a farmer's market, and more.
Thank you. So, any observations or... Sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Leclerey.
This is unrelated, so go ahead and keep, if there's any comments on the video. This is just a clarification of a date. But go ahead.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion about the video? Okay.
I, it was mentioned that the utilities meeting may be on the December 15th. I looked it up, and it is December 17th, just to clarify. Yes. Unless, of course, you want to meet on a Saturday. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, and we have another opportunity for citizen comments, for any items that were not on the public hearing, and please limit your testimony to three minutes.
We're never without words, and since we're the only ones here, guess what? You get to hear us again.
And for the record, your name?
Sharon King, Chair of Fathoms of Fun, Mayor Pro Tem. I hope that all of you had an opportunity to review the ad that we had in the Port Orchard Independent this year, because we specifically thank the city and the city council members for making Port Orchard a friend, a fun and friendly place to hold events. And so, I just wanted to, again, thank you for all the support that you do give to Fathoms of Fun. And it was exciting to see us on that video, I loved it. I'd never seen that one before, Beck, so that was wonderful. So, Helene, our pageant director, has something that she'd like to say.
Going slightly rogue from what we discussed, I'm Helene Jensen, by the way, in case anyone needs to know. And I want to invite all of you to bring your family and friends to come to our Santa breakfast on November 24th.
24th.
24th, I should know that, but I somehow always get screwed up on the dates. And you also know how hard we work trying to gather contestants for our Fathoms of Fun scholarship program. Well, I'm a little short contestants this year, so if you guys have any cousins, or grandchildren, or children, or, or anyone that wants to run, I'm super cool to hang out with for a whole year. And you should send them my way, so I can teach them to be all proper and nice, and win scholarship money, and come play with you guys in the city. You know it's a great program, so send them my way. You guys know how to get ahold of me, I need them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizen comments tonight? All right, seeing none, we are going to head into a 15-minute executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101-I, and no action will be taken.